Mayor Pro Tim Reeves, it's now three o'clock. I don't see Mayor Khalid on the call as yet.
Okay. Well, I would like to call to order, open the meeting for the first reading of the FY twenty-three proposed budget presentation.
Thank you, sir. This will be the roll call for today's public hearing. The Honorable Catherine F. Ral, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District Two. The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accountant Four.
And the Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six.
Present.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. You do have a call.
All right, I would like to go ahead and call first item.
Yeah, the first item is the FY twenty-three proposed budget presentation. It will be presented by Karen Slaton Dixon. Didn't know if the city manager, Ms. Sally Jones, wanted to open the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Well, good afternoon, pardon me. This is the presentation for the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget. I'll just jump right into it and let Ms. Karen Dixon do her presentation and then the staff. We will be available for questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, Tammy Sally Jones, and good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tim and Councilwoman. Appreciate it. This is our first proposed budget hearing, so this is kind of an overview. So I will start with, we'll go back to the first screen for me. Okay, as it noted here that our first public hearing is today at three P M., and so our second public hearing as well as adoption of the proposed FY twenty-three budget will take place on September twenty-first at six P M. And the September first, two thousand and twenty-two meeting will be held public at the City Hall in the break room. Okay, next ring. So as state legal requirements, according to the Georgia Fisher Code, Chapter thirty-six dash eighty-one, each municipality is required to adopt and operate under an annual balanced budget for the general fund, each special revenue fund, and each debt service fund. So your enterprise funds don't have to be balanced according to the state law, which would be your sanitation and your stormwater funds, even though we do bring those balanced budgets to council for approval. Each municipality is required to adopt and operate under a project-linked balanced budget for each capital project fund. So we do do a five-year proposed CIP plan. Each municipality is required to notify the public that the budget proposal is available for public review and conduct a public hearing at least one week prior to the adoption of the budget resolution or ordinance, which we did make the public aware of the meetings. And also, if any amendments are needed, so that will be any increase in appropriation at the legal level of control of the local government, whether accomplished through a change in anticipated revenues in any fund or through a transfer of appropriation among departments, it's required that we get this approval of the governing body, which is the council. So this would say, that's just because we're in the laws negotiations, and right now we've budgeted a proposed amount, just kind of being conservative. If those funds come in to where we're going to collect more and we see at the first of the year after everything is completed that we have some extra funds available, then we can come back to council and request a budget amendment for any additional needs that may be the will of the governing body. Okay, so the budget in brief here for the FY twenty-three proposed budget, we've comprised of seventeen funds totaling one hundred and seventy-seven million. General fund budget is coming in at one oh one point seven million. We have one new fund, which is going to be the Camera Fund. And then we have two proposed new departments, which is the Internal Affairs and the Grants Department. So as we can see over on the right, we have general fund at one oh one point seven million. As stated, we have blighted properties at three hundred thousand, confiscated assets at a hundred thousand. We have E nine one one at one million, nine twenty-nine thirty. And we're budgeting for the American Rescue Plan, five million, nine thirty-five, three seven six. Even though the city, we do have funds available, we just don't see where we're going to spend all ten million of the A R P funds in FY twenty-three. So we're budgeting what we have received for within the FY twenty-two fiscal year. For Grants Fund, we're requesting a million dollars, and this is to help fund any grants that need to be, let's say, prefunded prior to actually the city receiving those funds. So we will have the seed money for those grant funds. We are proposing here to have the Public Art Commission to give them seed money of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I want to say that the city manager has made a recommendation that this money is not sent to the Public Art Commission until at least the first of the year. We're asking for a transfer to the Downtown Development Authority of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have hotel motel tax. We're projecting a collection of five forty-five, six hundred. T-Splas, we're projecting that we will collect seventeen million, five hundred. And like I said, that's kind of a conservative number that we're going with right now. Capital Grant Fund, which is going to be for the U R A, which we have to actually pay interest on those funds. We're going to budget for one million, one eighteen, three thirty. Our capital projects requests are coming in at twenty-eight million, five thirty-seven, six ten. And I will say here, and I've noted on one of my next slides to show about the capital project funds, that this is an amount that the city will have to go out and actually seek funding on. So we will come back to the governing body with where those fundings will come from for this twenty-eight point five million for the capital projects. Our U R A fund is coming in, we're requesting three million, thirteen thousand, five sixty-eight because according to the public works, this is the amount that's actually left over in U R A-funded projects. Solid Waste coming in, requesting eight million, eight seventy-two hundred. And this is a little bit more than, well, I would say considerable, a lot more than FY twenty-two because solid waste is coming in-house. So the the city will collect the money that comes in, eight million, eight seventy-two hundred, which will offset the expenditures in the solid waste fund. We have the Camera Fund. This is the new fund that I mentioned, which we're pulling out of the general fund so that we can better track these funds. So this is four million, seven hundred thousand for the Camera Fund. For Wolf Creek, we're proposing a million-dollar budget for Wolf Creek. And then Stormwater, we're coming in at one million, three fifty-eight, two seventy-two for to make up the total of one hundred and seventy-seven million, eight sixty-six, three ninety-six. Okay, and this gives us a general fund revenue proposed breakdown here. And so we have property tax that we budgeted at fifty-three million, eighteen thousand. Motor vehicle coming in at one point seven million. Franchise tax, franchise fees gives me for seven point one million. And a local option sales tax at twenty-one point five million. And I need to make a correction on my other slide. I said T-Splas, which is actually the local option sales tax is the one that we're actually in negotiation. And if we need to come back, it will be on the local option sales tax. Business and occupation, we're looking at two point eight million. For insurance premium tax, seven point one million. For other taxes, we're expecting two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred. For licenses and permits, we're looking at two million, eight thirteen, one hundred. And our I G A revenue, which would be Atlanta and Fulton County through the fire, it would be eight ninety-six, six sixty-four. And for other fees and services, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine sixty-five. And for fines and forfeitures, seven hundred thousand. And other revenue is one million, five twenty-two, eight hundred. And we're want to note here that our budgeted use of reserves come up to eight million, nine forty-two, nine ninety-one. And that budgeted use of reserve does include the the transfers that the general fund cover, which is pretty much like our the blighted properties to actually to Wolf Creek and to other entities that the general fund transfer money out to. So for total general fund revenues, one oh nine, three forty, one twenty. Okay, and here we will show here, and you're going to see that the totals are going to be different because we include different things within the the presentation here, where on the previous screen you didn't see the the capital, where it's twenty-eight million, five thirty-seven, six ten. So that that's where the differences can be, where you see our total is one hundred and twenty-nine million, five eighty-seven, two twenty because our personnel in the general fund is fifty-eight million, two sixty-six, nine seventy-two. And operations, thirty-six million, four seventeen, eight seventy-eight. And though the personnel and operations do include the two new departments of External Affairs and the Grants Department. And then our transfers here, four million, seven forty-six, four thirty, and then we have our capital once again, twenty-eight million, five thirty-seven, six ten. Our debt service to the U R A is one million, one eighteen, three thirty, and then contingency is five hundred thousand. So that's one twenty-nine, five eighty-seven, two twenty. And right now, we're full-time, part-time, and seasonal, and we'll have more of a breakdown before our next public hearing, but our full-time, part-time seasonal positions right now come up to six hundred and eighty-two. And that includes positions for the two new departments as well. Next slide. Okay, and so this gives us a breakdown based on the the different departments. So we have the Legislative Department, which includes our mayor and council. Their total budgets altogether come up to one million, seven fifty-three, three fifty. Our executive, this covers our city manager and city clerk department, so two million, five fifty, five forty. We have finance coming in at two million, three fifty-three, two hundred. And grants coming in at three oh one, eight hundred, which is the new department. We have information technology at three point eight million, human resources at one point one million, our risk management at two point nine million, communications at seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And then we have External Affairs, which is the new department, at three ninety-two, two hundred. So any positions that were in communications that were moved to External Affairs and an additional position were actually put into the External Affairs, so we actually reduced communications to to cover that. The same thing with the finance and creating the the Grants Department. We took the two positions that were in Finance Department, which were Grants Manager and a Proposed Grant Writer, took those out of Finance and put those in the Grants Department. So then we have our Facilities, which is one point seven million. We have General Services at two point seven million. We have Municipal Court at nine hundred and fourteen thousand, nine seventy-six. And then we have our our Police Department, so it's kind of cut off there. I will say, I'll pull that, our Police Department at twenty-one million, forty-seven, two fifty. We have Public Works at twelve million, seven oh nine, two twenty-six. Parks and Recreation at six million, one sixty, two eighty-five. Culture Affairs at one million, four eighty-six, eight twenty-two. Community Development at three million, two forty-eight, one twenty-five. The Code Enforcement, which is three million, one twenty-eight, four hundred. And we have Destination South Fulton, which is Economic Development, at one million, six ninety-five, four ninety-two. And I want to make mention here that the Main Street Old National, you'll see zero because all of those expenditures in the position that was there was actually placed into the Destination South Fulton Economic Development to create that one department. And then we have Main Street Red Oak, which also falls up underneath Economic Development at three oh seven, nine fifty. Our transfers, once again, at four million, seven forty-six, four thirty. Our capital at twenty-eight, five thirty-seven, six ten. And our debt services, U R A, which is one million, one eighteen, three thirty. And then contingency, which is five hundred thousand. And so I will make note too that contingency is to be used by the will of the the mayor council. If there are unbudgeted projects that come up during the, anytime during the year, if they're not budgeted, then contingency is there and available for mayor council's use as, you know, different projects come up. Go to the next screen. All right here, so this is going to talk about our non-departments and our transfers, give you a breakdown. As I mentioned, we have the blighted properties for three hundred thousand. We are transferring to E nine one one, one million, nine twenty-eight, three thirty. Transfer to D V A, a hundred and fifty thousand. And transfer for to multiple grants, a million dollars, a capital project. And as I noted earlier in the presentation, that we will be seeking funding to to pay for the twenty-eight million, five thirty-seven, six ten in capital project requests. And then we have transfers to debt service, U R A, once again, one million, one eighteen, three thirty. Public Arts Commission, a hundred and fifty thousand. Transfer to Stormwater, two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred. And then transfer to Wolf Creek Fund, one million, and then contingency, five hundred thousand. So that comes up to thirty-four million, nine oh two, three seventy. Right, and this talks about the capital project expenditures, just give you a breakdown per department. Parts, based on their request, is coming into one million, six ninety-eight, four hundred. And I would like to to make note that in that one million, six ninety-eight, four hundred, there is an allocation for land acquisition and park maintenance of a million dollars. Cultural Affairs is two hundred and five thousand. On the Fire Department, eight million, three thirty-five, six seventy-five. The Police, three million, seven twenty-eight, four forty-seven. Public Works, thirteen thousand, seven eighty-nine, seven eighty-eight. And then Stormwater, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So that brings us up to that capital amount of twenty-eight thousand, five thirty-seven, six ten. And then put this slide in here because I want the the council just to be aware that the Government Finance Office Association, which is G F O A, they they recommend that in our reserve fund or fund balance, that the city have at least three months. So that's twenty-five percent is what they ask that the city would have in the reserve fund. And according to the City of South Fulton's Fund Balance Ordinance, it calls for two and one-half months, which is actually twenty point eight percent of unsigned unassigned fund balance. So in in essence, if you're going to use it, you need to make sure that you that you only use that that amount or that you only let it get down to at least three months within your fund balance, so twenty-five percent. So the city's ordinance is definitely way less than the twenty-five percent recommended. So that that's a good point to be at, two and a half months. All right here, and so any question, take any questions, but the the public comment, we just make note here that the form can be found on the city's own website. And the form was available to two P M. today, which was September the thirteenth. And that if we made mention that if anybody had any questions, they've contacted the city clerk, Corey Adams. And we also published this with our notice in the newspaper as well.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dixon, for your wonderful presentation. And I will open this up to questions. Uh, Mr. Adams, I cannot see the queue. So if you can let me know if anybody has the questions in the order that they was received. Mayor Pro Tim, actually, Mayor Khalid has joined the meeting as well.
I turn the, I turn, I turn the meeting over to you, Mayor.
And Mayor Khalid, we would need to go through the process of the public hearing as well.
Can we take the questions from council before we open the public hearing?
Yes, your pleasure.
Yes, all right, Dr. Ral.
Thank you for recognizing me. This question is relative to the separating the seventeen accounts going forward. I did not see anything for the Tree Fund. Would that be a segregated account? And actually, Councilor Al, that the Tree Fund will actually be set up as a a liability account. So then it wouldn't be a a fund. You wouldn't see it within the the general fund or anything like that. It's going to be out there because it's special earmarked and designated for the the Tree Fund. So it's going to sit in a a liability account. And and so the one, the one hundred and seventy-five million that you talked about, it it would be captured under that amount versus this one. Is that correct? That's correct. Okay, I think that was it. And and let me ask, in terms of the roll up, in terms of more detail about what's in each of these categories, is the main primary source for the public, the budget presentations? The department presentations? Because I know at the beginning of that, it had detail by department about expenditures. Does that tie back into this, these numbers? And and I want to say that we sent another document that actually was posted on the the city website. This is just my presentation that I use to present to today, but the actual document is is going to be different because it gives detail, more detail than than this. Okay. I know we received like a seventy-some page, but there's not any narrative with it. Is that the same document we're talking about? Right, that particular document that you all received, and we're going to build on that. We were making so many changes, so many things that we were trying to to capture that came through from council, and and we wanted to make sure we had it. So we sent that document out to you all. So once we're done with this meeting today, we're we're back on it to add all of the the meat and potato to it. So you're you're going to get another document that's going to include a lot more detail before the the next hearing. Okay. Thank you. That concludes my questions for now.
All right, thank you, Dr. Ral. Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you for recognizing me. And so relative to the clerk office, I know we are about to make add a role in that office, and then we need to make some other changes that I can't discuss now, but it will be discussed in executive session. So if those changes need to be made, uh, and it impacts this budget, do we just, I guess we will have the city manager to speak with you to make those changes and adjustments?
Yes, ma'am, that that is correct. Just give it so so we can go ahead. Because like I said, as soon as we're done with this meeting this week, we're going to be getting everything finished. So we get, you know, some more numbers. So if you'll get that to city manager, then we'll make those changes.
And I would like to know, it was, where do we get the details for the grants and the public affairs, those salaries? How did those, how do we come up with those numbers? And how many positions are we talking about adding to those areas?
And and that's one of the the items that's going to come out because we do have the documents. We'll go ahead and share with you what was sent to us from the the city manager's office when it came down to the positions. And then me and myself went in and we we tried to propose what we would say would need to be for professional and and supplies line item. And we did send that over to the city manager's office to make sure that what we had proposed looked good. But we will share that with you all once we finish, so you can take a look at it and see if you you want to send any more changes for that.
Okay, and also I'm looking at our council and mayor budgets. And for the council of the, under office supplies, most of the council has it has, it has different amounts in it. Like twenty, like, for example, I'll I'll take that back. We have in the council budgets, most of us have for other supplies. I think it was a three thousand dollar number. When I go to the mayor's budget, it was like a twenty thousand dollar bloated number. Operating supplies, twenty thousand dollars. And then for operating supplies, and most of the council budgets, it is zero. So I need to know what that number is for full transparency to the public because they really like to hone in what the city council and mayor is doing and spending money on. So I need to know why it's twenty thousand dollars there, and then nothing for the other council.
All right, Councilwoman, we'll get that because what I have for operations for each of the the district is sixty thousand for operations, personnel at one forty-nine, four hundred. The only difference is in District Seven because we, whereas you all's total budget is two oh nine, four hundred, we only budgeted a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, fifty for District Seven, since that person would only be coming in at seventy-five percent taking office in January. And so each of the operation, operating budgets for each of the districts is sixty thousand. And then the mayor is actually at seventy thousand.
Okay, but what I'm looking in, I'm looking at this document. Okay, but what I'm looking in, I'm looking at this document that you sent us. And what I'm honing in on is this twenty thousand dollar budget. Under, under, um, it's on, on the operating, hold on one second. Let me tell you what it is. It is, uh, for operating supplies.
Okay, operating.
I have no idea what that is. And then for operating supplies, when I look at the other council budgets, I don't see us, none of us have that. So what is that twenty thousand dollars for?
Okay, and I, I know in, on that item, each one of the districts took the, took their sixty thousand and divided it pretty much how they wanted to. When the meetings took place with, um, with the finance team and with the, the city manager's office, it was everybody pretty much said where they wanted their sixty thousand dollars to fall. So some districts did say that they wanted it in their operating, um, supplies to be used. And I can get you what that breakdown is. So everybody didn't pick operating supplies for their funds to go. Like, they may have wanted more money in their, um, their supplies. They wanted more money in travel than the, the, uh, next district. So we can make sure that you, that you get it, so you'll know what each district picked.
Yeah, send a breakdown to the entire council of everybody, um, so we won't, so we can have an understanding of what's going on because we get those questions.
Okay.
Pretty, uh, pretty often.
Okay, all right, I made note of that.
And then, I mean, quite noticeably, his budget, the mayor's budget, just for the, uh, education of the ca- um, public is going to be, uh, larger than city council because, um, there are two roles, uh, dedicated to that office. And, um, it is a at-large role.
That's correct. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, seeing no more hands, I'm going to go ahead and open, uh, the public meeting. Uh, Mr. Clerk, will you let us know, uh, we have any respondents?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and, and Council, we did not receive any comments, uh, uh, for the public hearing for, uh, the FY twenty-three budget. Um, as stated, uh, the next public hearing will be on September twenty-first. And the, uh, comment, uh, page is open for the public. Thank you.
All right, so we have no comments. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And if all hearts and minds are clear, I will take, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Then probably move in second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, I didn't get, who was the second?
Our second.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilmember Rao. So motion and second, roll call vote. Councilmember Rao?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reeves?
I.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
The public budget hearing is adjourned at three thirty P M. The next meeting, the work session, will begin at four P M. Thank you.